Good evening. I would like to call to order the Wentworth County Council meeting for Tuesday, September 16th, 2025. It is 6:30 PM. We are in the Harvey Hearing Room. This meeting is also on Zoom. The meeting ID is 8317-906-9682. Passcode is 806204. And the phone number is 646-588-8656. Call the meeting to order and roll call, please.
Councilor Ayala.
Here.
Councilor DeMarco.
Here.
Councilor Costigan.
Here.
Council... Councilor Tassanieri.
Here.
Council Swope. Councilor DeRoz. Vice President Belcher.
Here.
President Lutary.
Here.
Thank you.
All right, ask everybody to stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Minutes have been circulated from the September 2nd meeting. Is there a motion to approve? Motion by Vice President Belcher, second by Councilor DeMarco. Any discussions, additions, deletions? No. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Although none of the ayes have. General information and recommendations. It's kind of a great night for this. We have a lot of turmoil and craziness going on in this country right now. Especially over the last week. So it is really nice to be able to celebrate people that protect us day in and day out. We all thank them for all they do. And it's such a family. You know, sometimes in the department like mine, it might be one or two people when the fire... When something happens for the fire, they're all there. So thank you all for being here. And I hope someone is on the street protecting us right now. But with the retirement of Chief Wiley, we've had some internal moves. And we are extremely fortunate to be able to swear in some fantastic people into new roles and new positions. And again, these people, we see some recent retirees here as well, as well as current employees. And they serve and protect this town, and have done so for many, many years. It's kind of interesting. I love talking about numbers and stuff, so I look bad. I wonder how many firefighters, how many chiefs have we had? And I probably have the information wrong, but I'm going to share it anyway because this is what I have. And before the 80s and 60s and 70s and such, we had a board of fire engineers, right? And then in... Ed Hayes has... Excuse me. Was the first deputy chief of the department. And it was still run by the Board of Engineers. And then we had Charles Flanagan, the first official chief of the department, followed by Chief David Higginbotham, Chief Paul Ford, Chief Larry Powers, Chief Paul Flanagan, Chief William Scott Wiley. And now we are very happy to swear in our seventh, I believe, chief, Chief Stephen Calandra. So how we will do this is we will have the chief. We will do these one at a time, take the oath of office as administered by our town clerk. So first of all, Chief Calandra became a firefighter February of 2006, so just shy of 20 years under the department. He was promoted to lieutenant in March of 2012. He was then promoted to acting captain in February of 2017, and then permanent captain in July of 2017. Our chief is... We are incredibly proud to have him. Like I said, we've had seven chiefs, and we've been incredibly fortunate with each and every one of them. Again, I thank Chief Wiley, and we will commend Chief at a future meeting. But tonight, it's all about this. And thank you so much, Chief, for taking on these duties. We appreciate what you do every day. And I know you'll say a little bit about your staff and how fantastic they are and how lucky we are to have them. And, you know, on top of that, we're really lucky that we'll be having a new fire station to share this all with the community and such, and hopefully in a year and a half. So very proud to introduce Chief Stephen Calandra.
Do you, Stephen Calandra, solemnly swear that you will build true faith and allegiance to the United States of America and the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and will support the Constitution and laws thereof? Do you, Stephen Calandra, do solemnly swear that you will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all the duties incumbent upon me as fire chief of the Town and Wentworth Fire Department and obey and be bound by such laws, rules, and regulations as are or may be from time to time laid down for the government of the Fire Department of the Town of Wentworth? Do you, Stephen Calandra, hereby accept the position of fire chief of the Fire Department of the Town of Wentworth?
Yes.
Congratulations, Chief. Paul Montgomery. Deputy Chief.
Deputy Chief. Deputy Chief started in February 2005, promoted to acting lieutenant in 2017 for one year, and then promoted to captain in 2018. Congratulations, Deputy Chief.
Do you, Paul Montgomery, do solemnly swear that you will bear true faith and allegiance to the United States of America and the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and will support the Constitution and laws thereof?
I do.
Do you, Paul Montgomery, do solemnly swear that you will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all the duties incumbent upon you as deputy fire chief of the Town and Wentworth Fire Department and will obey and be bound by such laws, rules, and regulations as are or may be from time to time laid down for the government of the Fire Department of the Town of Wentworth?
I do.
Do you, Paul Montgomery, hereby accept the position of deputy fire chief of the Fire Department of the Town of Wentworth?
I do.
Congratulations.
Michael O'Keefe started July 2010, promoted to lieutenant in August 2023, and now welcome Captain Michael O'Keefe.
Do you, Michael O'Keefe, solemnly swear that you will bear true faith and allegiance to the United States of America and the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and will support the Constitution and laws thereof?
I do.
Do you, Michael O'Keefe, do solemnly swear that you will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all the duties incumbent upon you as captain of the Town and Wentworth Fire Department and will obey and be bound by such laws, rules, and regulations as are or may be from time to time laid down for the government of the Fire Department of the Town of Wentworth?
I do.
Do you, Michael O'Keefe, hereby accept the position of captain of the Fire Department of the Town of Wentworth?
I do.
Congratulations.
Aaron Smith. Aaron was hired on July 1st, 2019, and now promoted to lieutenant, Aaron Smith. Congratulations.
Do you, Aaron Smith, solemnly swear that you will bear true faith and allegiance to the United States of America and the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and will support the Constitution and laws thereof? Do you, Aaron Smith, solemnly swear that you will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all the duties incumbent upon you as lieutenant of the Town and Wentworth Fire Department and will obey and be bound by such laws, rules, and regulations as are or may be from time to time laid down for the government of the Fire Department of the Town of Wentworth? Do you, Aaron Smith, hereby accept the position of lieutenant of the Fire Department of the Town of Wentworth? Congratulations.
Devin Racco. Devin was hired in August of 2021, and now we are pleased to introduce him as lieutenant, Devin Racco.
Do you, Devin Racco, solemnly swear that you will bear true faith and allegiance to the United States of America and the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and will support the Constitution and laws thereof?
I do.
Do you, Devin Racco, solemnly swear that you will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all the duties incumbent upon you as lieutenant of the Town and Wentworth Fire Department and will obey and be bound by such laws, rules, and regulations as are or may be from time to time laid down for the government of the Fire Department of the Town of Wentworth?
I do.
Do you, Devin Racco, hereby accept the position of lieutenant of the Fire Department of the Town of Wentworth?
I do.
Congratulations.
Now, we have the official penning.
We have the official penning, yes. Captain Calandra? Chief? Captain.
More to the morning.
That's not what happens in the town. Deputy Chief Montgomery? Captain Michael O'Keefe? Attorney Allen Smith? Lieutenant Devin Racco?
I'd like to ask Chief Calandra if you have anything to say.
Sure. So when I accepted this job, I knew it came with a great deal of responsibility, and I embraced that. I'm not going to shy away from it. I look forward to leading this group into the future, the transition to the new fire station. I've got a great command staff behind me. I've got great firefighters, men and women coming up behind us. We will be the best trained fire department of Commonwealth if it kills me, and it might. But that I promise. This just dawned on me. Back in November, when the council decided to put the schools and the firehouse in the same ballot, a lot of people didn't like it, but it was the right thing to do. And the council president just mentioned community as opening remarks. And the fire service, we call each other by our last names. It's not being disrespectful. I'm going to call on some last names, and you tell me the year you graduated Wentworth High School. Flynn.
Seventy-nine.
Farulo.
Nineteen... Uh, fifteen, sorry.
Lieutenant Rich.
Eighty-three.
Devin.
Sixteen.
Swiddy.
Twenty-five.
Ninety.
Monty.
Ninety-three.
Gorman.
Ninety-seven.
Lundberg.
Oh-seven.
Early.
Vocational school, ninety-six.
You still like the width of schools, though. So my point is, Wentworth Public Schools and the Fire Department are one. And on your worst day, you dial 911. In this community, a stranger's not coming to your door. The person you went to school with is coming to your front door. The person you played Little League with, coached youth hockey, might have been in your brother's way. That's... You don't get that anywhere else. A stranger's not coming to your front door, okay? And I thought that was important to tie the schools and the fire department together. Wentworth Schools have produced great people, and they still are. This is proof. That's it.
We're going to try to keep this joyous attitude throughout the meeting. You are welcome today. All right. Again, as we start public comment, remember what a great time we just had, and continue to have your thoughts. And public comment is open.
Diane Sands, Precinct 5. I have a couple of things I want to ask about. The first is the recall vote or discussion. It's not on the agenda tonight. This is the last night we could have to get a vote on it without a special election. So I'm hoping that you put it on the agenda for the next meeting, and it will be costly. We'll have, you know, we end up costing us a lot. So I'm hoping that'll get on the agenda, that the town can at least hear what's going on, what's happened. There were little shenanigans that went on, and that's what I would call it. What we thought had happened got reversed. So we want to be clear on that. We want to know the legalities on that, and we want to know the results on it. I am advocating for it being on the ballot. I think what's the harm in letting people vote yes or no? There's no harm. That's what we do. We're Americans, and we vote. We don't just arbitrarily make decisions and shut it off for the town. So that's my question, one of the things. The other thing is, we're having... We are collecting signatures for a statewide ballot. There are four topics that are being put, placed on the ballot. And we'll be around, and we'll notify everybody on Facebook what the schedule is. They have to do with eliminating 3A, getting control of local zoning, stopping major development, and straightening out how this came about, the zoning issues. So that's basically it. We're encouraging people to vote yes on all four, but it won't be on the... It's a state ballot. It won't be on the ballot until 26. So that's it.
Thank you. Okay. Really?
No.
Kim, Precinct 2. A big shout out to Steve Keller and his crew for... They painted a buffer zone on both sides of the crosswalk on Walden. Yep. Huge, huge safety zone. Not only is it safer for the pedestrians, also safe for the drivers, because you can see the oncoming pedestrians as they're walking, because there's a nice buffer on both sides of the crosswalk. So thank you.
Hi. Hope you remember me. I still do exist.
Name and precinct, please.
Yeah. Irina Doe, Precinct 4. I apologize for not saying my last name, because my previous country can suddenly activate and hunt me. So I am an immigrant. Like approximately 20 or 21% of Wentworth population are foreign-born. And I'm not anyhow desperate, illegal, criminal, or not even poor. Police found me worthy of a firearm license. I think that closes the question of me not being illegal, criminal, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So my previous country is Russia, and that comes with some kind of curse that is called Russian passport. I cannot get rid of it. To get rid of it, I need to go to Russia. Russia started a war in Ukraine in 2022, and I made my choice. I support Ukrainian army with donations, volunteering, et cetera. Russia sees that as a treason. Well, I can understand that, but the sentence for treason is 10 years to lifetime in Russian prison. Do you like realize how does that sound? Lifetime in Russian prison. I have good news, though. Lifetime in Russian prison is not that long. They're torturing politicals, obviously. And I'm not talking like bruises, broken ribs. That's kindergarten. I'm talking puppies, fingernails. I'm talking adult males raped to death with a broken glass bottle. That's my personal perspective, that I fear in case of ICE making an error, putting me on the plane to Russia and deporting there, handing over to regime. Are you like serious? You want to ship me there? All I'm asking is that no mistake to be made, that people that are arrested are rest under a warrant, that local process, legal process is followed. This ask is like unimaginable in any developed country. But yeah, those are developed countries, not us. And I'm not trying to hide from any responsibility. I really not. I support what I believe. Ukrainian army. Great job, guys. And I'm going to keep doing that. I'm going to keep trying to make the world better, to help people around me, as I always did. But am I really asking too much to make sure the processes are followed? Thank you. I really ask to reconsider supporting proclamation by Town Council Vice President Hannah Belcher. Thank you.
Mike, Kellner, Precinct 2. From the Climate Commission meeting just last week, wanted to relay a couple bits of information. Kristin gave a wonderful presentation, very informative. I followed up with two questions, and I just... I know that the Morton Street burn project is on the agenda tonight, so I wanted to relay that information. I asked Kristin if any part of the process can be expedited to account for any delays in the funding that would further push off the Phase 3. And she essentially said that it could not. So no permitting, no construction. So whatever the timeline for that project is, we are essentially stuck until there is funding to get us into the design phase. I also asked her about, as I had spoken to several folks along the Morton Banks corridor over the past couple weeks, and several had mentioned the prospect of managed retreat. I asked Kristin where, generally speaking, the money for managed retreat comes from, and she said that this was almost entirely from federal programs. She said that one of the federal environmental programs that funded managed retreat had essentially been shut down, and that, you know, there was one more that I imagine, you know, may not be long for the world. So anyways, those are the two pieces of information I gleaned on top of the presentation. Also, there was somebody who mentioned last week as sort of an alternative or some sort of path forward. They mentioned trying to figure out why a gazebo in park was built. And out of curiosity, you know, I looked in, and again, not that that gets us anywhere with that project, but what I was able to find is that for this particular gazebo in the Marine Ecology Park, the project broke around on June 2nd, 2017, and was overseen by the Town Council's Public Works Subcommittee, the Town Manager's Office, and the Public Works Department, the focal permitting under the jurisdiction of the Wentworth Conservation Commission. So this is just to say to that commenter from last week that we built it. So there really doesn't seem to be a path there in terms of, you know, getting some sort of compensation that might, you know, be put toward this project. That's all. Thanks.
Mark Sander, Precinct 2. I want to kind of piggyback on Diane Sands as regards to the recall. A board that you, the council, appointed made the decision. And I think it's a real slap in the face to them that you didn't have their backs on it, okay? I'm not sure really who's running the town at this point, because that whole recall process was scuttled. And I'm not sure if it's Tony, Ms. Quist, Mr. Sibley, because it's certainly not the council, because you didn't have their backs. You appointed them. You should have their backs on your decisions. And I do wish you would put it on the agenda to further discuss what happened.
Thank you. Karina Campavasso, Precinct 3. I'm here tonight to highlight the fiscal irresponsibility of the four no-on-3A councillors. That's Council President Lutary and Councilor Swope, Costigan, and DeMarco. A week ago, I attended the meeting on the Citizens Advisory Commission on Climate, where we heard about the projects that Wentworth was hoping to fund through the $1.2 million in MVP grants that were denied because of our non-compliance with 3A. During that meeting, Councilor Costigan stated that we were, quote, "being handcuffed by the state." I have to disagree. The Commonwealth is not handcuffing us. Rather, we are handcuffing ourselves by refusing to comply with 3A, especially given that we have a way to do so that will cause no additional housing to be built, as Council President Lutary has previously acknowledged. President Lutary, I wish you would reiterate what you said on July 3rd, which is that the Plan Board's excellent plan was, quote, "net zero or negative" to dispel the misinformation on this issue. Now, if they repeal 3A, fine. All more power to you. But right now... Sorry, excuse me. Right now, we have to comply with 3A, or we're going to be shut out of money. I've heard from several anti-3A people that we don't get much grant funding. That simply isn't true. Over the last 10 years, we have gotten over $1 million in MVP grants for climate action planning. Page 254 of the fiscal year 2024 budget lists over $1.1 million in various grants from the state since 2021. We recently received $225,000 from the Massachusetts Office on Disability to install ramps at the library. Luckily, we received that money, that grant, before we were out of compliance with 3A on July 15th of this year. Because, as the MOD's website states, "The receipt of grant funds is contingent upon the grantee being able to certify that it will comply with Massachusetts general laws, including Section 3A of the MBTA Communities Act." Then there are the grants that we will be unable to apply for in the future. Of particular interest to me is a grant we might be able to get if we come into compliance to install an extremely efficient, state-of-the-art heating and cooling system at the fire station. Last April, we voted to fully fund the schools and fund a new badly needed firehouse. I supported both measures, and I'm very happy that most residents did also. I supported both measures, and I'm very happy that most residents did also. However, in about a year and a half, we are going to be getting property bills that reflect the debt exclusion. I do not think that residents will be happy to learn that we could have gotten a grant to install a super-efficient heating and cooling system that would have lowered the operating costs of town buildings due to the empty posturing of the four no-on-3A councillors. Thank you.
Before, because you already spoke, if anybody else who has not spoken yet?
Yeah.
Bob.
Hello, council president Luteri.
Just, name and precinct.
Sorry. Bob Carroll, precinct six. This is part of a letter that I wrote to the town council on September 10th. I call for the immediate removal and replacement of the Winthrop Board of Registars and Voters. Their actions on September 3rd, 2025, were unlawful and erode the confidence of our election process. Per the Commonwealth Register's booklet written by the, by the state, every city is required to have this Board of Registars for election commission responsibilities that include registering voters, local listings of residents, certifying nomination papers and petitions, and absentee voter applications, and administering recounts. That's a lot of very important stuff. Board members James Gallagher, Denise Mahoney, and Paul Reardon failed in their most basic duties to follow the rules written in our town charter and state election laws, and ignored specific legal counsel provided to them by the state, I'm sorry, by the town attorney, Sipleletta, at the meeting. Each member took an oath to faithfully perform the duties of the registrar. That's in Section 5123, Mass Law. Nowhere in their duties does it list adding items to a ballot because they want to, because it feels right, because they have the personal desire to let others vote on the issue. This particular issue revolves a failed recall attempt and removal of an at-large councillor. Per our own charter, the recall petition was required to be within a certain number of days, 28, and be signed by at least 20% of the voters of the town, because it was at-large. Per our charter, this petition did not meet the minimum required signature threshold. Period. Full stop. This board is an important part of our democracy and how it functions, and it is no place for personal politics. I hope that you immediately remove these folks from the board before they cause more damage to our community, and Winthrop can move forward knowing that their votes will not be manipulated in the future. Thank you.
Todd Zacco, precinct two. Just to dovetail off Red Card Bob's comments.
Point of order.
Point of order.
Point of order.
No, I don't want, I don't want, whatever. Mr. Carroll is, I'm going to dovetail off to Mr. Carroll's comments. He said he was talking about.
He's got to calm down.
Yeah, you should have calmed down.
All right. Scott, please.
Mr. Carroll's comments about the voters of Winthrop, you probably should also know, and everyone in this room should know, over 2,200 people signed. And just because, no, if you don't know how the county works, they go through it as carefully as they can, but they don't always get the count right. We all know that about 2,000 actually were verified. But that doesn't include the hundreds who stood before us and told us, "We won't sign, but we will vote against him when it gets on the ballot." So, if you want to turn against the voters, that's fine. Good for you.
Celeste, I think, was next to them.
Celeste Barry, you, precinct one. Well, I hope everybody who says they're going to vote for me but don't want to put their name on a piece of paper, come through. Just like, so I'm a member of the Climate Commission, and we just celebrated one-year anniversary. It's been mentioned among commissioners and others that it took so long to even form a commission to address climate and infrastructure concerns. We spent a year building coalitions, relationships, digging into the data, developing strategies, factoring in grants, knowing that we're not going to get fully funded by grants, knowing that it's subject to approval and acceptance and scrutiny. But we did not do so without factoring them in, including them as part of the solution to the problem. So, the question that I have today for council is, clearly, there are folks who are standing on that, what they perceive to be minimal evidence of grant opportunities. What was the plan B? If fully half of town council never planned on grants, what was the plan B? Why form the Climate Commission? Why take the time of your own councillors, councillor Costigan, councillor DeRoss, all of us volunteers, all of the coalitions and groups that we have been forming over the past years, and source, other towns that we were relying on, that were relying on us to hold up our end of the bargain? What was the plan B? And I will say, I'm not surprised if folks are confused about what happened with the recall, because it's clear that we have decided, in this town, we will decide which laws we will uphold, as we heard all of those officers pledged to, which everybody here pledged to when you took this office. We're going to decide which ones we uphold, which ones we make up as we go along. So, I think we need to, you know, draw a line in the sand. Please spell out to everybody what plan B is, and please, let's get our act together and determine, are we going to follow laws or not? Are we a lawless town, or are we the Wild West? Thank you.
Yeah, me, fully precinct six. I'm just looking at some messages sent out by the No to 3A campaign, where they repeated the number of signatures that they needed, 2,800 odd. At least four times I have the amount, and they even said, mentioned once that it was 3,000 signatures. These are all posted by Cheryl Howard. And I just, it's kind of beggars' belief that suddenly this number is not valid. It's not the correct number. And I feel like what we witnessed at the Board of Registars meeting was a bit of a flimflam, somehow trying to convince the registrars that, you know, this is what should be counted. And like the same example given here, people express their verbal commitment to vote. It's not the same thing. That's all I'd say.
Thank you. Anybody else that hasn't spoken yet?
I have a hot mess of papers, so let's see what I can get, bro. Y'all, take advantage of doing FOIA requests. That's how you get the actual real information that you are. Oh, sorry. Erin Marcellus, precinct five. Sorry. Do FOIA requests. That's how you get real information, instead of like guestimating or listening to word of mouth, right? Ask the questions. Do the research. That's what we need. We need to stop spreading lies no matter who. And it might not even be a purposeful lie, right? It might just be a misunderstanding, and then that turns into a lie. Okay? So, there are emails between the clerk's office, the lawyer, the town lawyer's office, the Board of Registars, to the Secretary of State's office, back and forth, that, that show that they, the Board of Registars, knew that we're not supposed to be doing what they were doing. Do FOIA requests. I'm not looking at you. I'm not just looking at you, sorry. There are, you want to see the proof. It's there. But back in February 9th, 2023, the Winthrop Transcript ran an article on council votes on charter changes recommendations. And from there, the, our town council president said that a recall would be roughly, this was back at, back in 2023, recall would be, would be roughly 500 signatures to pull a petition and about 2,400 to trigger an actual election. Remember, this is back in 2023. "I think it's a high standard if you're looking for a recall," said Luteri. Luteri also noted that the recall provision is a tool he hopes the town will never have to use, but that is there if it's needed. Okay, sorry. I got a lot going on. From an email, again, use FOIA requests. "The board exercised its self-appointed authority," the board, I mean, the Board of, thank you, registers. "Exercised its self-appointed authority to act against the advice of legal counsel and to, in their view, overrule the decision of the clerk." Also, the original petition that was signed by the 10 people to start the recall states clearly the amount of signatures. They agreed to that. They signed it. And also, on the back of it, it says to the town of Winthrop, "Petition for recall of elected officer to the select board of the town of Reading, Massachusetts." So, yeah. Awesome.
Anybody that has not spoken yet? Sorry.
Thank you. Lisa Elbrini, precinct six. So, first, I actually want to thank you, councillor Luteri, for being a sponsor of the North Shore Philharmonic Orchestra of St. Michael's. It was a fabulous event. That's continuing all the good news that started off this meeting. On a different matter, however, I do have to turn to the Board of Registars. I submitted a letter to the president and to the council members. It was signed by seven Winthrop presidents about the actions, the recent actions of the Board of Registars. Other people have approached me since then and wanted their name added to it. So, I told them I would let you know Lisa Finesia of precinct one, and David Carroll from precinct three also want the record to be on to the letter. Can you really quickly just note the questions for the benefit of the public? You all have this letter, but I don't want to take up too much time. Why did the Board of, the Board of Registars act beyond its authority after being informed by the town council if they're not authorized to take their vote? Did the board members have a conflict of interest? And had they, when they took their vote, and did they consult with the State Ethics Commission before voting? Did the board members meet or speak together about the potential ballot question at any time prior to their meeting beginning on September 3rd? There's been some question about violations of the Massachusetts Open Meeting Law. How did they put a question on the ballot? Does state ready? And I will say, I want to thank the town clerk who clarified that, and it was a simple error, and I entirely understand that. So, thank you for, for getting back to me on that. Why was public comment not allowed at September 3rd board meeting? Although some did call that a public hearing. And what is their practice on that? If the Board of Registars is sued for acting beyond its authority at that meeting, will town council hire alternative counsel to represent the town? Because, of course, our town council acted, suggested they could not take that vote, so couldn't be expected to defend it. And finally, will town, town be taking any action against the board members for their actions, as Bob Carroll asked? More importantly, well, after that, the attorney for the recall committee sent a letter to town council after day and hours. And in my view, those, that letter did not adequately respond to the questions, but contained a lot of accusations. It called citizens of the town who asked questions cowards, said they had yelled and wrenched, tried to prevent people from voting, but rather, they're asking legitimate questions that are key to public discourse and accountability. I, I'm not going to validate those comments or further fuel, raise the temperature of rhetoric by responding further. That's too easy to do, and it's done too often, as we know, in this community and in this country. So, I'm not going to go there. I will finish with by saying two things. One, the attorney's letter states that recall is not a matter of personalities or politics. It's about lawful actions based upon our charter. I could not agree more. And the people of Winthrop were given an opportunity to put this on the ballot, and they squarely, flatly decided not to by not meeting those internal requirements. And lastly, Mr. Walsh, the attorney, suggested that citizens who ask questions are somehow inappropriately challenging volunteer. I have to say, but between my husband and I alone, we have given more than two decades of volunteer service to this community. And my guess is that a third of the people in this room have given. That did not mean that we were not accountable, because we happen to be volunteers. And we all took a note, and we all take a note that says, "Last comment. I do swear that I faithfully and impartially perform all the duties imposed upon me by my appointment to be in the committee of the town of Winthrop according to the laws of the Commonwealth, so help me God." That is all we are asking, that you make sure they do.
Any questions? Two more comments. Do you want to speak? Mr. Dabb?
Thank you.
Okay.
Jack Allen, precinct one. No matter what way you look at this vote coming up in November, to get 2,000 signatures on a question about town politics is a major undertaking. I hope that the people that signed the petition vote with their heart and their conscience to put the right people in place this coming November 4th, 5th, whatever it is, so we can have, so we can have an overall consensus from the town council. We will not have a four-to-four vote, as we've been having for the past six months, because certain people didn't want to place a person of esteem into the precinct two chair. So, I'm asking all the people that want to see this town go on as a town rather than a city with many, many sandbox-type structures of 882 units, which will essentially destroy this town. Thank you.
Okay, so we'll go back. I think there were two other questions. We'll go to Diane and then to Kim.
Okay.
Yes.
Just a couple of replies to things that were just said regarding the challenge that we had with the Board of Registars. I believe there was a very good argument made for the only place registered voters were listed was in the recall petition. Besides that, this isn't finished. Wherever it goes, it's not finished. The other thing is about the FOIA requests. I have filed many FOIA requests. That's how we got the hijacked email about Joe. It was through a FOIA request. I filed recently four with the state. And the last one I filed with the town was so incomplete that I've appealed it now. And I just heard from the Secretary of State's office, excuse me, Secretary of Commonwealth's office. And a very familiar name came up in the Secretary of State's office. And I would just like a confirmation from the town that there is no conflict of interest here. I think we all know what we're talking about.
Just say it.
Michelle Tasceneri.
No. Continue with your comment.
Okay. So, there's a familiar last name that came up. And I would just like a confirmation that there's no conflict of interest in this at all, that there's been conversations and advice through the Secretary of State's office. And there's nobody that's conflicted with this, giving that advice. The other thing is, let me just read. Maybe that's it. Oh, on, for next week, if we do have this on the agenda, I would like to have some preparation, some answers, and maybe to get a vote. I would like this addressed. The town did get an enormous amount of signatures. The law, as it states, is supposed to align with the state law. State law is 25% of the voters, the number of votes that Mr. Tasceneri got in his last election. That would be 663. If you say it's the number of 25% of the registered vote, of people that voted total in the last election, it's 882. We well went over that. So, someone has to look at that, look at the charter. It's ridiculous and impossible task to do. One more thing.
Thank you.
Am I done? Is that the end? I'm done? Oh. I forget what I was going to say now. Oh, I asked last week that you guys would respond to me and let me know what charities, since you are such a welcoming community, how you welcome people. Did you take them into your house when you were, when the lieutenant governor asked us to voluntarily take migrants into our house when they came? Did you do that? Did you volunteer? Do you give any effort to anything? Particularly the nobles? And I asked that you let me know what your charitable efforts are. I think Lisa Farall here, charitable efforts. We volunteer as well. But, you know, it's very easy not to talk a lot and not to walk the talk. And I would like to know what to do. That's all. If you could respond, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Kim Dyers, precinct two. A recent town council meeting, there was a public comment. The topic of the removal of the original berm on Morton Street was brought up in the DCR and removed it, and it should be accountability and repercussions and something to fall back on. I just want to provide some additional information regarding that. The decision to remove the berm at Belle Anne Marshall on Burton Street was approved by the Massachusetts Department of Conservation and Recreation, specifically Joe Orfant, Director of DCR's Bureau of Planning and Resource Protection. He gave the green light, explained the sand would be used in the Winthrop Beach Rinnervation Project, and outlined how the project would proceed, including vegetation removal and berm narrowing. In short, DCR had both the authority and the funding as part of a $30 million coastal resilience and DTA restoration initiative to authorize this berm's partial removal. In 2016, the DCR and the town- In 2016, the DCR and the town of Winter entered into a land use license agreement, enabling DCR to proceed with marsh edge parkway and ecological movements, including modifications to the berm. DCR led the design, approval, funding, and execution. Thank you.
Caitlin, can you hear us?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yep.
Hi, here first, Precinct One. I would just like to share for the good of the public the text of the email I sent to the Councilor Kostigan back in August when this question was first on the agenda and then shared with the whole town council today. It wasn't once on the agenda later. So as resident of Precinct One and a member of the Ordinance Review Committee, I want to strongly urge the town council today to vote against the proposed charter change that would reduce the size of the town council and make oppositions at large. I voted against the proposal to move this change forward in committee, as I was and remain unconvinced that it is a solution to the problem components our government solve, which in our discussions at ORC was namely a lack of candidates for local elections. My fear is that council of this makeup would be unrepresented of the diversity of Winter counter to the charter's commitment that what the government reflect all peoples and neighborhoods within the town and would lead to more confusion on the part of residents as to who the representatives in rural are and complacency on the part of our elected officials as to who bears responsibilities for issues that are raised. There is a value and a sense of accountability that comes from being the elected representative of a designated neighborhood, something that would be lost with an all-at-large council. If our election were uncompetitive, I believe this stems from a multitude of factors that can be addressed, including inadequate compensation for elected positions that preclude those with limited incomes or less successful work schedules to consider ready for office. At a name of community engagement process that doesn't seek to meet residents where they live or offer opportunities to engage with electives at varying times of day and week. Also, we only have pretty much one way to interact with the council, which is here in public comment, which, as we've seen tonight, does not allow for dialogue or the answering of questions. I also believe there is a lack of improvement of engaged citizens to serve on volunteer committees, which would serve as a first step or far leap for more robust engagement with town government, including one of the town council. So thank you for taking the time to let me speak tonight. And if there are any questions, I am happy to speak to the councilors further, but I didn't get any responses to my email back in August or now, which I have to say compounds my fear about what will happen to accountability if this council goes all at large. Thank you.
One more.
I know that a couple of people have spoken twice. I appreciate Councilor Cherry. Two things. I wanted to first thank Corinne and echo the comments she made earlier. We go to 3A. We'd like to go on record as saying that. And just regarding the previous speaker, the last public comment, you recall that I also asked that you vote against the recommendations of the Ordinance Review Committee, that it go to an entirely at-large council. I do believe that that would not provide adequate representation for the different areas of town, all of which have different interests. And I appreciate President Cherry, you gave me some perspective on that question after our last, the last town council meeting. And I, I took some of, took the information into account. But I do think it still is not at all advisory to put away at-large councils. So I'm just going to be on record as saying that, so thank you.
Moving on. Correspondence Denise.
I did. Outleters from Lisa and from Rob Carroll and from Caitlin Bowles, who just read their information. They're good. Cheryl Howard and Marion Nicoletti are no to 3A. It would like to be exempted is the only answer for that. We did get several emails on the recall of who would like to see the recall on the ballot, which is Carol Pacella, Todd Sackel, Bob Toad, John Tranpaglia, Dorian Wayland, Mary Gosapi, Cheryl Egan, Patty Brugman, Michael Herbert, Michelle Roser, Robert Hughes, Judy Hanlon, Fred Bagley, Robert Church, Nancy Weiss, Linda Bows, and Deborah Wilcox. And that's it.
Thank you. Committee report, rules and ordinance for President Bellacher.
Thank you. Rules and ordinance met last week. We also met again performing this evening to look at the ADU ordinance as proposed by Attorney Sipoleta. Currently, we have not adopted our own, so we are subject to the state's rules on ADUs. And what we have in front of us tonight is a more restrictive policy that goes out of its way to protect our parking and our streets and a few other things. And I can talk about that when we bring to a vote. But it did allow the committee with a positive recommendation.
Very good. Thank you.
Guys, let me sign it now.
School have a report. School department has not met since our last meeting. Update on policy committee. Board of Appeals, 760 Shirley Street, decision has been sent to the chair. Board of Appeals for review from Project Attorney. 67 Woodside, decision has been sent to the chair for the Board of Appeals for review from Project Attorney. 115 Reed Street, hearings continue. On the Planning Board, 50 Somerset Ave, decision has not, has been sent to the chair for review. 63 to 69 Putnam, decision has been sent to the chair for review. And 181 Wethup Street, decision has been sent to the chair for review. Just in synopsis, I'm basically saying those decisions have been made. They're going to be reviewed now, and then they should be brought public in the next meeting. Town managers' report, town manager dis electronically senders' report. If you want to take a few seconds, and if there's any questions on the specifics of the report, we'll be happy to hear them.
Yeah, I just like to add one thing. There's a lot of talk about the recall. I just didn't get it reported, or it should have. On September 11th, 2025, the committee to recall Max Tesciari filed, did file a petition in the Massachusetts Supreme Judicial Court seeking an order directing the town clerk to place petition language on the November ballot. As of this writing, the opposition of attorney, sorry, town clerk, which our opposition is, or the opposition is being drafted to file with the SJC, and all likelihood, the SJC will make a ruling one way or another, either to put it on the ballot or deny it. So it's in the works, and that will probably happen in the next, you know, 30 days or so.
All right, and you had, so any comments on your report that you, anything specific?
Nope, just to get out there. I mean, I know there's a lot of talk about the misprint in the legal ad. That was a mistake. Obviously, it was copy and paste from the wrong section of, an old advertisement that the OPM had. So we apologize for that. We need to get the corrected one out last week, so that was fixed. But just to rest assured, all the information on Project, all the documents that were put out for the, had nothing mentioned the rink or the gym, but all represent the middle school.
So just for people who might not understand, two weeks ago in the transcript, we have post looking for bids for abatement and demolition of the middle school in the auditorium. Unfortunately, when it went in the transcript, it said they were looking for bids for demolition and abatement of the hockey rink and the gymnasium. So that did not overwhelm a lot of us.
Money is a cost.
And it had to change, and it did not affect the date.
And we had a great walkthrough.
We had a walkthrough last Friday. There were several firms, truckies in it there.
At least it doesn't.
We will be getting bids in, hopefully sale by the 26th, I think, of September. And there's a firehouse building committee on the 29th, which will offer. Any comments, questions on, start from Councilor Yell, and we'll work our way down.
Yeah, so I'm assuming, because the information has been released by via FOIA, that the communication between the Board of Registars and the Secretary of State's Office for Elections and the town, sort of like a three-way set of communications, are now fully public. And I think a lot of people are not aware of it, and therefore confused about that communication. I'm assuming we're free to post that set of communications on the town website, so everybody can read it. Is that fair? Nothing?
I mean, you can get it through a FOIA request. I mean, we don't usually post emails on the town website, but.
We don't post responses to a public records request on the town website?
No.
No, on the website, yeah.
If someone requests a copy, we would send they get that.
Yeah, they get that.
And I think it would be a service to anybody who's interested in it. Otherwise, there's going to be one FOIA request, one FOIA request, and one FOIA request, and just let's get it out there so everybody can read it. I think it's illuminating.
I mean, public records requests, once they're, once they're public, should be, should be, should be published, you know? A request of records should fall in public.
I just think it would be helpful and kind of circuitry, you know, seeing all these comments, hoping it actually happens. Because there's a lot of rumor in the window and all that stuff. But seeing the base communications, I think, would be very helpful and educational to all of us to understand exactly what happened.
Yeah, I'll talk to town attorney about it, but I mean, they'll get back to me. Without a vote from the council, I'll just have to take a look at it. I don't want to say yes or no, because I want to take a look at it.
Okay.
That's not normal etiquette that we put on.
If we could tee it up for the next meeting and see whether we could do it or not, and if there has to be a vote on it, put it on the thing. Just trying to be helpful.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Kumbala?
There's been an article that's been circulating around about Winterp losing 1.2 grant funding. This is complete misinformation. I'm going to ask the same question I asked the last meeting. Tony, when we were complying with 3A, did we get the MVP grant?
When we were compliant, no. But I will say on the second round, they actually talked about it in the email that because we weren't complying with 3A, it was one of the reasons we didn't get it.
So why didn't we get it the time before?
They gave us a lot of reasons why. It had to do with the application and.
Are we still eligible for federal grants?
Right now, yes, there are federal grants out there for climate stuff, but yes.
But Massachusetts has no federal grants.
You got to remember, Rob, all the federal money funnels down to the state. So we don't get directly from the feds usually. It funnels down to the state, and then the state gives it out to the MVP and other programs, so.
But the bottom line is, the bottom line is, we didn't get the MVP grant when we were compliant.
Correct.
Thank you.
Anything, Councilor Kostian?
Yeah, I just want to reply, I'm sorry, just reply to somebody online, because it relates to my stance on the.
That's a discussion.
No, just a little town manager. Oh, 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 sorry. Okay, okay. Now, I'm going to leave it at no comment. Thank you.
Councilor.
Thank you. Just quickly, with the lights on the rear street, I've been reaching out to a couple times about how dark it is when the sun is gone. And there are no.
Actually, I think Steve could follow up on it. I think we got an email today. I have some information on that.
Yeah, so we've been working with the contractor in the state, trying to get some temporary lighting there. We have promised some solar-powered lighting by Thursday. They're also in the process of, as you see, the new streetlight fixtures going up. And they're going to try to expedite power in those new lights as soon as possible, so.
Thank you, because it's incredibly dark over there. There it comes. It's very dark.
Thank you, Councilor President. One question regarding the demo of the middle school. Has anyone in the town reached out to the Secretary of Administration and Finance about the release of a 2024 earmark from Chapter 151 that specifically says for the $2 million shall be expended to the city known as the town of Winter for infrastructure and demolition of the former middle school located at 141 Pauline Street?
We certainly can. I just, it doesn't have to be approved by the government?
Yeah, it does, but it doesn't hurt to ask.
Yeah.
Might not be compliant today, might be compliant tomorrow if there's no, or in 2026, if there's no, if it gets knocked off of the MGL.
We can certainly ask, and obviously this year's capital plan, so we're getting.
This year's capital plan, say that again?
I thought the state is in the process of already accepted products.
They have accepted products, but there's always room to add an earmark request.
You can certainly make a request.
Councilor.
I'd just like to thank Kim Dines for the cleanup the other morning. I was surprised, actually. I mean, if you don't count seaweed, it's something to clean up, but you just count trash. Our beach was in pretty good shape, except for where the kids hang out. And there's a little space where the kids hang out, and there's a lot of trash. So we concentrated on the area. But really, I was pleased to see that. I understand it's rocks. I understand that it's not the greatest in the world, but thank you very much. Thanks for your work. That's very kind. And also, Tony, I still want to take a ride with your folks.
Yeah.
I know you mentioned, I think in your report on the rear street, the paving.
Still have a date.
We don't have a date. It's not 25th.
We don't have a confirmed date yet. They're trying to move it up to the first week of October. With any luck, we'll have a confirmed answer, you know, by the end of this week. The contractor and the, and their subcontractor in talks to try to schedule it. They're well aware of our request to get it expedited. We're also learning that they may not be able to do the whole area in one night. So it could be, you know, a multiple phase, last phase to get it all done. We should have more answers by, hopefully, Thursday. We have a failed meeting on Thursday, and then I'll pass on whatever information I get to Tony.
All right, and I would say, again, I'm getting older, so there was a school committee meeting last week, which I guess is since our last meeting. But the major topic there, and this is kind of strange and kind of different, so I figured I'd pass the information along. The schools and the teachers are in negotiations. It's a negotiation year. And how, you know, this specific process is how it works. In the beginning of the meetings, first handful of meetings, they set ground rules. One of the different ground rules this year has been that the negotiations are open. So if the first open negotiation with the teachers' union will be, I believe it's on Monday, September 29th. It's at 6 o'clock, and it's at the Wethup High School Library, I believe. They're not sure how many people might be coming, so they will be discussing what the teachers want with the schools. You know, they'll be discussing what is usually done in a private setting, but they've agreed to do it in an open session. So it might be of interest to people. Just wanted to pass along the information. So that's Monday, the 29th, at 6 o'clock in the high school library, I believe. So just thought I'd pass that along. Old business. Town council vote to approve the draft ADU ordinance without a recommendation from the planning board. Now, this is because we haven't asked, and it's not because that they refuse to do it. It's because that they've been very busy, but we just feel that this is an issue that needs to be resolved as quickly as possible. Right now, under the guidelines of the state law, what ADUs, we're trying to tighten them up a little bit for our town, for our community. So we have chosen, it's been in rules and ordinance for a while. We've been waiting for the planning board, but we just think with the amount of work that they have gone on, it would be good to try to resolve this and come to a resolution, because eventually we'll have to hand it in to the state to get their okay on what our recommendations are. Vice President Bellacher.
Thank you. So the ADU ordinance, or the ADU rules under the state allow for an accessory dwelling unit to be put in a place that's zone residential A by right. It has some restrictions, but not a lot. And I want to thank Attorney Sipoleta and Town Manager Maria for putting together an ordinance that does a lot of what we talk about here often, like protecting parking and making sure we're not overcrowding ourselves accidentally. So I'm going to go through a list of the things that we've done in this ordinance that may get more restrictive than the state mass general law on this. And that's why it's important that we get this going now, because, as the president mentioned, until we have something on the books that we've approved, we are under the MGL for this. So there were a couple of things regarding parking that we were more restrictive of than the state. But all of these are allowed. We're just opting to be more restrictive than that. So this ordinance restricts parking at ADUs that are outside of 0.5 miles from a transit station, so a bus stop. We're also separately from this, working on a parking ordinance that will look at all of our parking rules. We don't have too much wiggle room in this to look at parking overall. So this is as restrictive as we can be within the guidelines of the MGL. We also prohibit new parking spaces in the front yard for ADU or primary dwelling. We also allow parking in the side yard for two cars in tandem. This is to help alleviate the issue caused by not parking in front. Some other things that we have been more restrictive on are the prohibition of duplexes, condos, and townhouses for ADUs. So we are not allowing ADUs in multifamily or attached housing. ADUs cannot be owned separately from the primary dwelling. You cannot use an ADU as a short-term rental, so an Airbnb or Verbo or something like that. We ban business operations in ADUs. We also, sorry. We also, sorry. If the entrance is external, there needs to be a walkway. So those are some design components. Everything else is standard with MGL, but it is as restrictive as we can be for our community, and I think it's important that we get this on the books as soon as we can, because it does have to go to the Attorney General's approval, and we'll see from there.
So that's coming out of committee with a positive recommendation?
Yes.
So that's coming out of committee with a positive recommendation, which is now required a second, it's on the floor. Now, this has been sent, and I mean, they just met for the second time this evening, I believe, and, but it has been with the council. I don't believe there were any amendments to this since. Before I open up for questions, I will ask, was there anything in there about flood zones?
Oh, yes, sorry. So you are not permitted to put an ADU in anywhere that's within the FEMA's 100-year flood map, which is a large swath of the town. So there are a lot of areas in town that are completely restricted from ADUs.
I'm holding this up for questioning, but I just want to ask the first question on that now. I mean, I think the thought process is here is to get as restrictive as we can with different reasons, right? So there's a couple of things. First, we talked about front yard, right? How restricting front yard parking. And I think a lot of people don't really understand what front yard parking is. So basically, if you look at the front yard house and you draw a line from one end of your property to the other, you shouldn't be parking. So, you know, in my situation, if not that it would be an ADU, but we have a two-family house, the driveway goes from the sidewalk to the back of the house, but the house starts, you know, 20 feet in or 15 feet in. Technically, you're not supposed to be parking at the end of my driveway. Is that what this is referring to also? Be my first question.
No, there is a definition, I know, in zoning ordinance that explains what front yard is. So you can park in the driveway, but if the driveway comes up to the front of your house and there's not a garage, like a garage under there, then you're not allowed to park there. However, any front yard parking space, that was allowed prior to the enactment of that zone ordinance. Further, in some cases, the Board of Appeals has, in very few cases, percentage-wise, has allowed a variance of front yard parking if, in fact, there is some obstacle or something of the shape or topography of the land or somewhat, is such that you can't park beside the house, sort of in a driveway. And they still are cognizant of the fact that you need to get cars off the street, and so in some limited number of cases, they have allowed you to park in the front yard.
You know, and more importantly, on the flood restriction. So we all know from 3A, we have 8,800 such units within the town. Out of those, we might have 4,000 or less, single-family homes. So those are the ones that we're talking about, right? The 4,000, so single-family homes. I'd like to know how strict that this would be. Do we know how many of those 4,000 homes are in a flood zone? Because if we're just doing something randomly, we're up, no. I'm sure it's not 3,900, but if it was, that means we're only saying that 100 homes are eligible. Like, do we have a number? Or are we just blindly saying?
No, I think there is a number. It might be in the accessories office, it might be down at ISB, but that restriction is a derivative of the state mandated code, so they don't want us to be building in something that's going to flood, obviously. And a lot of the, this is from this day, so Chairman, Chief President DiF, a lot of the buildings and new additions that are going on in town are within the protected wetlands, within flood zones, and they have to go to the Conservation Commission. The CONCOM has some very strict rules of their own, as well as DEP. So I think what the state was imagining is that in certain coastal towns, Nahat, Hull, Winterplo, and so forth, they have to be very careful in where they want to be allowing ADUs. And I think that sort of fits within the framework of our, our ordinance.
And I'll start again with Councilor Ayala.
Yeah, first of all, I want to thank the committee. I sent them a series of comments, and they've been adopted, and so I think the language here is very, very clear. If you're on a two-family home, or a three-family home, or a four-family home, you're not getting an ADU, there's no appealing it. It's gotten dry. So all that's great. I think it's all good. Something that got away from me that I have to say, I just focus on just now, it's section 17A12, and I'm a little bit confused by it. It reads, "More than one ADU on a single lot is prohibited unless authorized by special permit by the Board of Appeals," et cetera. So this means that, the way I'm reading it here, one could have a single-family home, have an automatic ADU if they meet all the other requirements, but then ask the Board of Appeals for a second ADU. That seems to me like something that we should strike. There should be no appeal, you should be able to have a second ADU. You get one, if you meet all the other rules and everything else, you're out. Just my personal opinion. So I don't know if we can change it on the floor or not.
You can certainly make that amendment on the floor. I think, in my discussion with Attorney General's office, I don't think there would be many occasions where a second ADU would be able to be built because of the required setbacks and so forth. So that would, the only, the exception that I might be able to think of is if you had a large tract of land and you had a small ADU in your primary residence, but you had a large garage, like an old carriage house, which some of those still exist around town. That would be, I think, about the only one that would be able to be permitted. And again, that special permit requirement is a derivative of the state mandate. We didn't want to totally blow apart the state model that they were giving us, but we did want to make sure that it was tailored finely enough to protect, you know, the town of Winterplo. And as council, as president, who you were, Council Ayala. The thinking, and I had sort of just random passing conversations with members of the Board of Appeals, CONCOM, council, and so forth, and there is some, probably a mix of opinions, whether or not we should be able to allow ADUs in a two-family house, let's say, or a multifamily house, which is the model for the state. And I'll tell you that I think that, and it's my opinion, and it's not, it includes some information I got from the Attorney General's office. One of the purposes of this ADU ordinance says, the protected ADU statute, as it's called, that we need to adopt in some form, says that it would allow owners of the home to accommodate a place for, let's say, an aging parent or a student, or a young person who's not able, might yet to buy a home, a place to stay in that ADU until such time as they're able to, if the rates drop, afford a home of their own. That's fine, and I think that's a sterling part of the purpose. Argument I have with that, and also to give some people who now might be on a fixed income, and they need some additional income to pay their light bills, pay their, if they have mortgages or whatnot, to allow them to do that without struggling. My thought is, and Tony and I, Mayor Jimino, and I matted this around a little bit, is, well, if you have a two-family home, then you already have that second apartment to put that aging person, to put that student, to put that single parent or whatever. You already have that. So why would you be entitled to another one to fit the purpose that you're already serving? That was our thinking. There may be disagreements on that, but you all are the ones that are going forward.
And again, I thank you for strengthening the language since the last time we saw it, and that's very clear, and that's good. My question is, so the other side of it, which is, I own a single-family home, and I get an ADU because I want to accommodate a relative or whatever, right, income, et cetera. But why don't you say I've got a single-family home, and I got an ADU, and then I'm going to try to get another ADU? It's now a business enterprise, right? And I just feel like that's stretching the whole ADU concept, so I find that, like, if there's language in here that says, "It shall not be built unless the Board of Appeals approves by a special permit," I'd like to eliminate that language and just make it clear the intent is, if you're eligible for one, you get one, you don't get a second. Because I just think it's now a business enterprise. Just me.
That's certainly a subject of discussion.
Yeah, true, okay. And Council, would you like to make an amendment?
I have nothing else.
No, 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 I'm sorry, Rob. Councilor DeMarco. Councilor Ayala, would you like to make an amendment?
Yes, please, if I could. So I would propose under 17A12, which currently reads, "More than one accessory dwelling unit on the single lot is prohibited," and it continues after the word prohibited. So I'm going to suggest that everything I'm reading now after the word prohibited be deleted, and so reads, "Is prohibited unless authorized by a special permit of the Board of Appeals and subject to administration's site plan review." I'd like to eliminate that whole part of the sentence.
Okay, so there's an amendment basically stating that you get one by the diapole, and that's it.
Yeah.
Okay. Any, is there a second on the amendment? Is there a second by the diapole? Discussion on the amendment. Councilor Tastaner.
I have a question about the amended language, but also, but it applies to the whole, the whole motion. What kind of risks are we running by passing more restrictive?
Well, we just, we can only discuss the.
Well, that's, like, this is, by striking the, by striking that language, now we're passing more restrictive. We're getting even more stringent than we already are on the state statute. We're not at risk, right? Oh, well, I'm not going to say that like that. Are we at risk for a potential injunction or suit from a homeowner that we're making it more restrictive and therefore making their property less valuable?
No, so long as, and I don't know how many of these ADU ordinances and bylaws have been looked at by the Attorney General. I know that Assistant Attorney General Margaret Hurley up there at the Government Bureau has set up this screening process or a datekeeping, so that if we wanted to send our proposed ordinance up to them, they would comb it to see how compliant it was. I had advised against that, and I think Tony had agreed. We don't want, you know, talk about vice of the diapole, we don't want to send things up and red flag anything that we think is appropriate for our community, and somebody sitting somewhere else thinks, oh, you know, it strays too far. We're always at risk of having this pushed back with a suggestion or an order that we, that we reinstitute it. Would it open us up to, it would open us up to an appeal. So the only way they would be able to do this is if you're asking for relief from the zoning ordinance, which this is, then the appeal would be to the Board of Appeals. Then they would have to make an argument to the Board of Appeals that this is too restrictive, it violates state law, so on and so forth. If the Board of Appeals said, no, we're upholding the, adhering our decision to the way that your ADU ordinance is written, and we're going to say no, then you can take it to Superior Court or Land Court, and that venue would start looking at whether or not our adopted ADU ordinance will be upheld. So it would be a venue that would be higher than ours, than the town.
So it's more of a risk that they could push back and have us change the ordinance, then there's a risk of, like, a monetary?
There's not, there's not going to be any monetary.
Right.
That was my second question, I have, so.
All right. Thank you, Attorney Sipulata. And we're still on motion. Councilor.
Attorney Sipulata, I've talked about this before, but the difference between an accessory unit and an accessory dwelling unit, I, because I understand that an accessory dwelling unit has to have a 10-foot setback, and an accessory unit has to have a 5-foot setback. I think a lot of people are confused about that, only from what I see, you know, when I get to.
You don't amend it, but we're still talking about your.
I'm still talking about amendments.
About Councilor Ayala's amendment.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, I agree with Councilor Ayala.
Okay. Any other discussion on Councilor Ayala's amendments? All right, we'll put it to a roll call, please. So this is to amend it, so you cannot, one by the diapole.
Councilor Ayala.
Yes.
Councilor DeMarco.
Yes.
Councilor Costigan.
Yes.
Councilor Tastaner.
Yes.
Councilor Spoh. Councilor DeRoz.
Yes.
Vice President Valcher.
Yes.
President Terry.
Yes. Amendment is passed, so now we're discussing the motion as amended. Councilor Ayala, did you have anything else? Let me, Councilor DeMarco.
I have nothing.
Councilor Costigan.
Nothing there, swap.
Vice President. Councilor Tastaner, any additional? Councilor Spoh.
Okay, now I'm back onto this. And I didn't know if we should put, I mean, we talked about not putting in anything like accessory unit in this amendment. However, it is very, I don't think it's clear to people who are applying. So I don't know where, if it's in something else and just we need to refer them, it's an educational issue.
It's not. You have successfully found the needle in the stack of needles. That's one of the things that I think is going to have to go to the rules and ordinance, because what we had with, there is another definition of accessory unit, which is not a protected, is an accessory dwelling unit. You might be able to probably, sure, I'm not going to tell you what to do, but maybe think about anyway, amending the accessory unit setback to be consistent with the ADU setback. You can do that in, if you're doing ordinance review now, I think.
In the ORC?
Oh, I see.
That is what it's.
That might be one of the things that you could, you can recommend, and then the planning board would get it, and you could bring it back here to vote on that, to make, just make it consistent.
Yeah.
Because they're two different things.
Yeah.
Two different animals.
But, I mean, people already have a garage, for example.
Oh, yeah.
You know, so, all right. We'll talk about that in the ordinance meeting. That's one thing. Secondly, when it comes to taxes, if you have an ADU and you have a single-family home, are you now assessed as having two homes?
Well, you're assessed at a higher value.
As higher value, driven, usually.
Right, it's not necessarily assessed as a two-family, but you will be assessed at a higher value.
What, what do you mean, what would it be? And is there some kind of rules and regs around that?
I think it just depends on the type of you, just like your house would be assessed. You have to.
So, okay, so I think that people that are going to purchase, or are going to build really need to know that, because they may not even think about the fact that as soon as that goes up, they're now assessed at a different rate.
To be clear, that happens when you upgrade a kitchen, do your roof, like, anytime you, you know, building permits, the accessory will.
Yeah, but I didn't know if it was going to be assessed as a separate unit. That's a pretty big thing. I mean, except for them just doing their kitchen.
Same thing, young people go from two to three, it's the same.
One more thing. Are there, and I take that this is all in the building code, I'm trying to say what it may be, wasn't sure, if the structure has to be looking like, or has any kind of appearance, does it have to be like that other structure that's on that property? I mean, what's the language about that?
That, that actually, I can't remember whether that was in the model, the protected ADU statute from the state, but I think it's, I think it's a good one if, if we came up with that, I'm sure it was the town managers, but that, anything that you're doing to the property that you're going to, let's say, increase the footprint of your one-family home to accommodate an ADU, it should, it should comply with, you know, whatever motif you have. We have a seaside motif here or something. We have a seaside motif here or something. You can't just throw a crack of box into your house. So they do have some architectural guidelines.
Do we have that on these?
Well, we have the design review board that orders it set up, that's something basic.
But that doesn't have to be up here?
The design review board has bylaws and orders that they have to review it and make suggestions, but it doesn't need to be.
But it doesn't need to be in this ordinance? Okay.
I mean, it can be, but it doesn't need to be.
Do you want to say something?
Yeah.
Vice President Bellcher.
Thank you. So we spoke with the assessor at our, not tonight's meeting, but the Rose and Orange meeting before that, and they're plugged in with all other communities that are dealing with us, and it is a little in flux right now how these buildings are going to be assessed, but they're already keeping a record of things they see while they're out in the field. So they're ready to roll when this is set and then they can take their steps to assess it properly. And it isn't done right as a two-family, but there is an intermediary way to assess it.
Yeah, and they didn't say that, but I'm just thinking about the people that really want an ADU and they come up and we don't have the answers and it looks like we don't, you know, it's really clear on it. So I'm hoping that we, that we can be clear. And finally, the Counsel DeMarco just said, I'm thinking about the bus station and bus stop.
Yes, I, I think you would ask me that question and I didn't have time to answer it that day, so I wanted to give you a little note on it.
Yeah, but I think everybody ought to, I can see that because it is a bit different.
It is. Yep, that, that comes right from the state.
And that's why he put it in as a bus station. So it's not a bus stop. The bus station, the bus stop, they're not the same. Is that my understanding, Veltcher's interpretation is?
I'm sorry?
That's your interpretation. A bus station is not the same as a bus stop.
It is definitely not the same.
So that will make a difference in terms of parking?
Yes, so.
And that's, so that will require more parking for many that are having, that have an ADU, that will require this one parking space. Thank you.
Any further discussion? My one concern there is just, you know, making clear the flood zone so we know exactly, we, I mean, it's easy to say, hey, I have a two-family, I'm out. So it doesn't matter where it is, I'm out, I can't comply, I have a three-family, whatever it is. How clear is it with the flood zone? Like how many?
We, we have a layer on our GAS now.
I understand that, but I think we should know where that number is before.
I think, do you have it? Twenty-one, thirty-one?
It's 21, 31, 21.
Denise has it.
I have 21, 31 homes, 2,131 homes.
Outside of the flood zone?
In, in the flood zone.
Single? Oh. Single family homes?
Single family homes in the flood zone, yeah.
Okay, so we have approximately 1,600, 1,700 homes that are eligible for ADUs.
Based on that, um.
Based on that, right.
No, right, right, right. But based on that, you know, we're going from 8,800 to 1,600. Okay.
We can get those figures too. Concrete. Yeah.
Counsel Testaner.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just have a follow-up question to, to follow Counsel Spoh's question. The ordinance says that the, there's no parking requirement for an accessory dwelling unit within a five-mile radius of an MBTA transit station as defined in 760 CMR, excuse me, 71.02. Is that, so what would be the definition of an MBTA transit station as defined by 760 CMR, 71.02?
Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry, Counsel, I have, would you share that, please? So the transit station is just pretty, is pretty obvious, talking about like an orange or something. But the, they call it a bus, a bus stop or a bus station. And I think the, I think the term is bus station or whatever, but that's, that's a side of the bus stop. It has some sort of an architectural, like you see those cubby holes, like those cubbies where you can go in and you can sit and get out of the rain and there's a couple benches in there and so forth.
That's what's considered a station or a stop.
That's, the bus stop is freestanding. It has the pole that says bus stop and it might be over here on the corner. There's another one there and the exact term that the state uses escapes me though, but it's on your paper.
This one in front of me?
Yes.
Infrastructure requires a fixed infrastructure distinguishing it from the bus shelter or a flagstop.
Right. And they, that, that's what the definition is. It has.
That's how they define bus station?
Yes.
In that CMR?
Yes.
Okay. I thought this might be a copy, a copy of base of the CMR, but it's, it's a more condensed version.
Right.
So we would have none of those.
I think you might, I don't know you might have one, is there one near, is there a park?
Probably some.
Yes. We're trying to get others, yeah. A little.
Maybe we should get others. Hopefully go with.
All right. Any further discussion? All right, so, that's for a roll call vote for the motion as amended.
Counsel Ayello.
Yes.
Counsel DeMarco.
Yes.
Counsel Costigan.
Yes.
Counsel Testaner.
Yes.
Counsel Spoh.
Yes.
Counsel DeRoz.
Yes.
Vice President Veltcher.
Yes.
President Luttey.
Yes. The ordinance review committee recommendation, the only one we're discussing, I know there were comments about it at large, we've said before that that's a much more involved process, it's not going to be on this ballot regardless of how we decide. So right now we're having discussion just on the abandonment clause change that was, came out of the ordinance review committee with positive recommendation. Vice President Bellcher? From the ORC, the abandonment.
So in the ORC, we looked at the abandonment clause and the hope was to ensure that there's due process in this, to make sure that if somebody triggers the abandonment clause as written, they have an appeal process that will be amended to this. Sorry, I'm just. It allows the council that has activated the abandonment clause to appeal within a certain amount of time, I believe they have a month, 30 days. And this is just to ensure that nobody is triggering the abandonment clause for reasons outside of their control and it gives some room for the council to ensure that the people on the body are here for the right reasons and they are missing things for excused reasons. It doesn't define them because we don't know what situations may arise that would cause people to miss meetings that are acceptable to the council, so just well defines the due process so that we don't end up in debates about whether or not it's there.
All right, this has been discussed. We've asked for documentation, we've had documentation submitted by Counsel DeMarco. Is there any discussion on this motion? So again, this is coming out of the ORC with positive recommendation. This would, if approved, would go on the ballot for a vote from the town, just to more clarify the abandonment clause. Counsel Ayello.
First of all, big improvement and thanks to the committee and Attorney Simpala. He has two sort of things that need to be thought through and the attorney and I talked about it at the bottom of this whole thing. I'm happy to pass this, I think we should pass it. It's a big, big improvement to me. But son, we should not lose back, lose sight of the, sort of two suggestions of topics to think about and pocket someplace else later on. So if you just say additional points, there's two additional points, like we're chewing over, but not that's a thing.
All right. Counsel Testaner.
This is the vote to put it on the ballot.
Yeah.
Put it on.
Yep. That's all. Okay, thank you. Roll call, please.
Counsel Ayello.
Yes.
Counsel DeMarco.
Yes.
Counsel Costigan.
Yes.
Counsel Testaner.
Yes.
Counsel Spoh.
Yes.
Counsel DeRoz.
Yes.
Vice President Veltcher.
Yes.
President Luttey.
Yes. New, new business, Mr. Ronan has been standing here for, sitting here for an hour and a half and I'd like to ask just to move the dedication request up to the beginning of the business. Motion by Counsel Testaner, second by Vice President Veltcher, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
So.
I'll be like one of my soccer players, I'll sprint to the.
I'll let you know when you're, when you're up.
All right.
No, 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 you can sit there.
I feel.
So I have, I had had a motion that I put on the agenda and it's relatively timely and it's, it's a dedication request by President Luttey for former athletic director Jim Evans and the request is to go to the memorialist committee to see if we can name the baseball diamond at Veterans Field after Mr. Evans. So it would be known as the Jim, James, Jim Evans Diamond at Veterans Field. We do not want to change the Veterans Field similar to what we've done in the past with other facilities. Phil was incredibly gracious enough to happen to have a meeting last night, which he discussed another motion that we had sent on, Jerry DeFranzo. He had a couple of street, colet dedications also. And Mr. Ronan would, again, the advice, if this is relatively timely issued, that, he took that up last evening. They discussed it at their memorialist committee and do have a unanimous positive recommendation on this. So I would like to bring up four motions. I'll have Mr. Ronan talk a little bit about the motions that we're going to be bringing up that were, you know, if you just get through them. One on the Jerry DeFranzo, we had discussed at a prior meeting.
All right, so I'm, I'm Phil Ronan, I'm the veteran service officer for the town of Winter. I'm also the chairman of the memorialist committee and as you surmise, I'm the boys last in soccer club. And we have 500, two, two and two. So the first motion we took up last night for the memorial committee was for Jerry DeFranzo. He, this gentleman was legally blind. He was at the forefront of pushing awareness to people with disabilities in the town. He pushed it at the state, town level, state level. He was well-known to everybody in the town and the proposal by the council, the town council is, there's a small path there, the Pillar House, that the town council would like named, you know, kind of like the pathway of the police station, the pathway down at, for Frankie Caviano, basically the same idea. And that was proposal number one.
So that is, just for clarification, if you're on Wildon Street, if you're coming by the basketball courts, there's two entrances that kind of create a semicircle in this parking there. That semicircle would be known as Jerry DeFranzo Way.
Yes, sir. Yep. The second, second proposal, as Counsel President Luttey alluded to, is Jim Evans. Jim Evans was actually my athletic director. Jim was the athletic director for maybe 20, 25 years, maybe more, baseball coach. When Title IX came in, he was at the forefront of pushing to open up more girls' athletic opportunities at the high school. He's very well-known, he was a great athletic director and a fellow Army veteran. And Mr. Luttey, along with several other people that were coaches and worked under Mr. Evans, forwarded this recommendation to the committee and this, like the DeFranzo thing, was unanimously taken up four to zero. The third proposal is Colonel Robert Tucker. This guy is the most highly decorated World War II veteran in the town. He kind of fell under the cracks, through the cracks, Norwood, Toby, because we had so many people killed in World War II, '52 to be precise. His heroism was overlooked. This guy had a distinguished service cross, the second highest award. He had a silver star, which is the third highest award. Purple heart with an oak leaf cluster, that means wounded twice. Bronze star with two oak leaf clusters, that means three times that act of heroism. Legion American, quad de guerre, this, that and everything. This guy was a bad individual. He fought in three wars and he went out as a colonel. His house was located, where he lived is in between Palmyra and Brookfield and I already had a minor discussion with the DPW director, Steve Calla. He will point out exactly where he thinks is the best spot on either corner to locate the sign for Colonel Tucker. The final piece of the puzzle is for Captain James Muckford. For people that don't know, he was, this is from the Revolutionary War. He fought in the Battle of Shirley Gutt. He was the only person killed. He, him and his troops assaulted some people, you know, assaulted the British and the proposal is to put a memorial sign down there for him and the Daughters of the American Revolution and the Boston Tea Party are going to pay for the sign, pay for the sign post. And once again, Director Calla will, you know, pick the best spot and these, I'm just going to give, this is from the Daughters of the American Revolution, you guys can just pass it around. And they are going to make a presentation to you folks at some point. They want to have a celebration, May 17th, 2026, to commemorate the battle of Shirley Gutt and they're going to pay for it and do whatever. But Susan Giroux is the person that's spearheading that. But once again, all four of these things were unanimously voted on, four to zero. We are recommending approval by the town council on all of those. And if you have any questions, I'll answer.
Thank you, Phil. So I would like to take all these motions up this evening, as the construction, and I'd like to, I mean, we can take them up individually or?
As a group.
As a group?
I have to abstain on one.
Great, so we'll take them up, we'll take one for Mr. Evans individually and we'll take the rest as the group, as a group. And again, just to talk a little bit about Jerry DeFranzo, which.
DeFranzo.
DeFranzo, I'm sorry, John. I apologize. For Jerry on, the thought here is if we could get this passed tonight, it would be very fitting, I'm talking with John also, it would be very fitting to be able to do this dedication October 15th, which is White Kane Day. You know, John made an incredibly good recommendation of that and I would like to fulfill that recommendation, so if that can be possible. So we will take, I will make a motion for, first motion will have three events in it, a motion to dedicate a semicircle in front of the basketball courts on Wildon Street in honor of Jerry DeFranzo. Memorial, dedication for a street corner memorial for Colonel Robert Tucker, most dedicated WW2 soldier from World War II from Winter. And a corner dedication for Colonel Muckford at the corner of Muckford Taps. Those all came out of the memorialist committee with unanimous recommendation. Any further discussion on these motions? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We'll do a roll call. Yeah. Yep.
Counsel Ayello.
Yes.
Counsel DeMarco.
Yes.
Counsel Costigan.
Yes.
Counsel Testaner.
Yes.
Counsel Spoh.
Yes.
Counsel DeRoz.
Yes.
Vice President Veltcher.
Yes.
President Luttey.
Yes, motion is passed. Now we'll do a separate motion that the town council approved the request from Counsel President Luttey to dedicate a memorial at Veterans Field, naming the baseball diamond the Jim Evans Diamond at Veterans Field. This was, came out of the memorialist committee with the unanimous recommendation at their last evening, September 15th meeting. Any further discussion on this motion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Counsel Ayello.
Yes.
Counsel DeMarco.
Abstain.
Counsel Costigan.
Yes.
Counsel Testaner.
Yes.
Counsel Spoh.
Yes.
Counsel DeRoz.
Yes.
Vice President Veltcher.
Yes.
President Luttey.
Yes. I thank you and I thank you, Phil, for taking such a very speedy manner.
Thank you all, good luck.
Thank you, Phil. Good night, all. Jim, I'll see you Thursday.
Yes.
All right.
Good night, all.
Good night.
But we just got here.
The appointments are going to be in hold for one meeting. We had a little mix-up in one of the applications and we didn't have time to get it to the council, so we will postpone those handful of appointments until the council meeting in October. Temporary voting poll. Temporary voting poll locations for the November 4th election. Obviously with the demolition abatement going on next door to the old middle school gym, it would not be safe and we will not be holding them there. So the motion is going to be... Well, regardless of the motion, the motion's going to be that we, for this election only, for the November election, that we temporarily relocate the polling locations, precincts one, two, and three. One, two, five will be not at the old middle school auditorium, at gymnasium. And we will move those to the Winter High School cafeteria. So precincts one, two, and five will be in the Winter High School cafeteria. Precincts three and six will move to the Winter Middle School cafeteria. And precinct four will stay at Golden Drive. The entrance for everyone except precinct four will be going into the high school. You will check in going into the high school. One, two, and five will stay at the high school cafeteria. Precincts three and six will move down the hallway to the middle school cafeteria. So this is just for this election, this is for the purpose, obviously, with during construction of the firehouse and demolition and such. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Motion.
Second.
Second. Any discussion on the motion?
Just make sure that we have an education program. If the kids, are the kids going to school that day?
No. No, kids are not in school anyway on that day. There is, however, PD that day for the teachers, professional development. Some of it is held in the school, some of it is held without.
I bet you there's a lot of seniors that can help people that don't know where they're going to get to where they're at.
Well, we've discussed this, and this is going to be very well-publicized. We will also have signs on the old middle school gym to make sure people know it's not there. We will have signs at the middle school entrance, making sure people understand that they have to go in through the high school. And I understand there will still be people with confusion.
Yeah.
So we will do our very best, and we will advertise this in the paper many times. We'll have it on WCAT, and we'll state it over and over again at the next two council meetings. Mr. President?
Yes.
Council. So just a couple of questions and a suggestion. Do we, have we screened to know whether there's either athletic events or any special?
Yep.
Golf club or anything like that? Do we know if there are athletic events happening at the fields or anything that's seen there?
At the fields? No, it's a Tuesday. I don't think there's any events, but I'm not sure of the fields. I know there's nothing in the high school.
Nothing in the high school. But I will double-check that.
Because it also might be worth, I worry a little bit about traffic management and adequate parking, and it might be good to have a police detail managing traffic and parking and making sure there's good turnover for parking and stuff. That's going to be a premium.
And we did look at alternative, we didn't just say we're going to go there. We looked at the alternatives at the ATC, we tried to get all five precincts. There was no alternative to precinct four. We always thought of just having Golden Drive. We had looked at the possibility of getting one, two, three, five, and six in the ATC, but it just didn't work out. The other option was to potentially use the senior center and to use that for some polling locations. The thought was to try to keep it in one building. It saves a little bit of money on police detail.
I agree, makes sense. I just, you know, making sure the parking's managed and traffic being managed with a lot of people. We also looked at, I mean, I've always, and I hope to have a future council meeting at the, at the land, because that's another building that I think it's great for the town, we get to see it, because so many people probably haven't even stepped foot in it. And it would be so much easier for the residents of precinct three, so maybe at some future point I'd look at that. But we did look at every other alternative we possibly had, and this was the best alternative.
I think we've called it.
Sorry? Yeah. Well, we haven't voted yet, so. Any further discussion? All right, roll call, please.
Counselor Aiello?
Yes.
Counselor DiMarco?
Yes.
Counselor Costigan?
Yes.
Counselor Tasnary?
Yes.
Counselor Spoh?
Yes.
Counselor Dross?
Yes.
Vice President Belcher?
Yes.
President LaTieri?
Yes, motion passed. And again, out of order, just quickly, because it's a quick one, on Morton Street firms, yeah, Chairperson Dimes was right on the money with her evaluation of what was done and how we got to this point. I've gone to Representative Turco, when he started the ball rolling, going to DEP. They, understanding of the situation, what we're looking at is potentially some remedy or some further discussion as to why they took the firms down. Did they do it with any foresight? Did they look at potential mitigation issues that might result from it? So the DEP has received our request. They are in review and should have an answer for us before our next council meeting, so that will stay on page twelve. And there is one more new business item, and it's about a potential sale of land. Anytime we have a potential sale of town, sale of town land, it will come to the council. The council will give the authority to the town manager to hold an auction for that land. So there's a piece, there was a parcel on Crescent, Crescent, that, right?
Right, Crescent Street.
Yeah, there's a parcel on Crescent Street, which, let's see, that's the way to describe it, it's behind the A Field, if you're coming off Shirley Street, kind of across from Expert Auto, the former location of Expert Auto, there's a little dead-end street. If you go down to the end of that street, there's a parcel on, I think, the left side. The parcel is roughly 4,600 square feet. It's a parcel owned by the town, and there is interest in the parcel. It is manlocked, it's not going to be in the town, used for that piece of property right now, potentially.
Yeah, I did have the conversation with Director Calla about it today. It is one of the low-lying areas in town.
Yeah.
And while there's no, currently no stormwater, you know, structures on it now, I mean, potentially having a piece of land that the town owns for, you know, future storage or underground storage of stormwater, you know, anything we do in the future, having that land available to us would be beneficial. And keep in mind, I mean, this is a lot that'll be a project for somebody. I mean, it doesn't meet the 5,000 Bigfoot requirement in 48. So it's got to go to the Port of Appeals for a special permit, have to go to conservation because it's in a low-lying area, first floor elevation would have to be, I think, a minimum out of the flood zone. So I know people talk about putting tiny houses out there, that would be difficult, that'd have to be lifted up substantially. So just, you know, I'm not sure I would recommend, I mean, certainly doing a live auction is the best way to do it. If you're going to do that, you know, there are things, I've done these before, you want to make sure you, you know, get a lot planned for the thing, you know, try to increase the value as much as you can by having some information on the lot when you do the live auction. You know, it's called an absolute auction. You bet down, people come in with their bid, and whoever gets the high bid will get it. We do with a minimum bid requirement. But this is, you know, something Director Calla certainly, maybe speak to it, but it's, you know, something that maybe for the town we might want to consider keeping and not bringing it up for sale.
Did you request for this to come on?
I did not, a resident did.
Oh, resident.
Yeah, I need a petric home.
And similar to when we were looking at different offices around town, for the fire station, we looked at Expert Auto.
Yep.
And that situation was, came to a point where it would have to be raised enough that the pitch would be much for the, for the average to get in. So there are definitely concerns with flooding zone. I'll get Counsel Spoh in one second, and Counsel Tasnary, but if, DPW Director Calla has been sitting there officially also, so if you have anything to add to this, that would be fantastic.
I do, I mean, I got my concerns, you know. It is an unperforming lot, but that's aside, it really doesn't really affect me on that, but it's a natural culvert back there. In heavy rains, it naturally ponds, it's a natural collection site. It is the lowest elevation in the town. But just like we're talking about engineer and drainage improvements on Morton Street and looking for possible storage areas and possible pump stations, you know, these situations are only going to get worse, they're not going to get better. So giving away a piece of property that may benefit, you know, engineer and stormwater mitigation in that area, I think is something we really need to consider, you know. That's all I got.
Counsel DiMarco and then Counsel Spoh.
Well, I think we're all learning about this a lot now. I think we need to do our homework on this, so I'm going to invoke a privilege.
We're not playing on volume.
Okay, all right.
If you want to stop discussion, you can.
I want to stop discussion.
Counsel DiMarco has invoked this privilege to put this off for the next meeting, and second round of public comment.
Diane Sands, precinct five. Just on the ADUs, I don't have a good understanding of how you plunk a little house in the backyard of your house. I know you can be connected if you have a garage or something. But just a separate house is going to require water, sewer. Who's responsible for that? I know you can get those mini splits for heat, but...
Don't respond to public comment.
Oh, yeah, right, right, right.
But this is a question, and we'll talk about it here. Any ADU to the, I'm going to speak to the town attorney, not to you, with no disrespect.
No.
Attorney Sip套letta. Anybody getting an ADU would be required to go off, and I think this has been discussed with Director Calla, too, would be required, if it's a separate unit, if it's a garage or such, you would be required to tap off your existing sewer and water. You cannot have a separate, because that would institute a separate residence. So they would have to come from the house, usually, right? So they're going to have to get their own water and sewer from the house to wherever it's going to go, if it's a garage in the backyard or whatever shall be. And it's the responsibility of the homeowner to do that. That's right, Ms. Fron. Thank you. Yeah, did you have any further comment? You have one minute left.
One other question on the ADUs as well. So if you had a single-family house, one and a half levels, you could legally go up to two levels, put a second level up without any appeal or anything. That's the law. So someone comes along and requests to put an ADU in, and they get one separately, and then they decide to put up another level. Still a single-family house, they can do that. But then, you know, they could obviously rent it, change it, rent it, I don't know why. Is that a possibility?
You know what I would suggest is, I would suggest you get a few questions together and send them an email, and we'll get a response to you.
Those are all of them, so.
Thank you. Mike.
Mike, I'm in precinct two. I just want to commend the council for the sort of intention and collaboration and real sort of inquisitiveness in, you know, the way that this ADU law was handled, a lot of questions asked, worked through a lot of things. I think it's notable because this law will have objectively a greater effect on density, on population. And that's been said by many. I recall Rep. Turco saying, giving a similar sentiment at a meeting at the PSA Hall, I was not a attendance, but I watched the video, and he gave a similar sentiment. He said that this is actually the thing, this is the thing that is going to drive, you know, higher density and population growth. And yet, here we are, working through it, passing a law. Now, you know, there's differences between this thing and the other thing, yeah, sure. But if we were given the option of passing a plan that allowed us to actually not have any ADUs built in the town, I think many people would be interested in that. And I think that would be a good alternative. But I just, what I see is this sort of understanding that, yeah, this is a state law, we have to comply, there was a deadline, I do recall, you know, to be sort of ushering everybody towards this deadline, and everybody doing due diligence. And it's, yeah, I think it sort of behooves us to get a little bit of perspective on what laws we sort of opt to make, you know, more of a cultural movement, for lack of a better term, and in doing so potentially harm ourselves. And I do mean that when I say I really want to commend the council with how they handled this ADU stuff, because it was, it was actually very interesting to watch and sort of impressed us with the amount of diligence that was given to it. And, yeah, thank you, guys. Thank you.
Mark, I'm in precinct two. I wanted to go back to parking, ADUs and what have you. And I believe in Revere, there's a limit on the amount of property that you can actually blacktop on your property. I believe it's no more than 30%. And I think we need to look at that as an ordinance to prevent people from covering more of their backyard to deepen their parking, not to, so that they don't, A, it contributes to flooding, okay? My neighbor across the street from me, about 75% of her property is either patio blocked or blacktoped, and it all runs into the street. In depth, it's not absorbed anymore. So that, you know, it exacerbates our flood because it's all running into the street. So I think we really need to consider an ordinance limiting the amount of property we can actually blacktop. Because it's, you're going to, people are going to create parking lots in their backyard to accommodate all this parking, okay? That's just something that we might want to think about, rules and ordinances.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Scott Moni, right, precinct three. I attended the most recent meeting of the Climate Commission, and pretty informative as far as I'm concerned. I think we have to look at climate change as something that impacts the entire town. I know we talked about Pico Beach, Morton and Banks, those are high priority areas. I understand that, I'm all for addressing those, and we have to have the money to do it. But I live on the point. I'm in one of the most vulnerable areas in town because that stretch of Shirley Street by Euro is my only access off the point in flood. It's the only way I can get off. So we talk about, we only have one way in and one way out of town, and we were concerned about climate change and flooding. I only have one way off the point, is Shirley Street. So my house is on the last street, Maryland Avenue, before Deer Island. So a couple of years ago, when the burns broke at Euro Beach, all that water came down on the ocean side, down all the side streets, flooded Taft Avenue, came down Maryland, Otis, Townsend, Pebble. We flooded all the way to the seawall, and we had water coming over the seawall at the same time. We couldn't leave. So when we talk about climate change and addressing it and funding, we have to look at the big picture. We're densely packed all throughout town, but a lot of people in this community don't live in low-lying areas. They don't live in flood zones. You look at Point Shirley, up on Siren, you look upon Hale, they're out of the way. They don't have to worry about it. But where we are, we're in low-lying areas. So the end of Mike Street, when we had water coming over the seawall, eventually, we had a sinkhole on the end of Maryland Avenue, a huge sinkhole, that had to be backfilled in because the water had come in underneath and just wore it out. So we talk about funding, I don't care where we get the money from, if it's state, if it's federal, we have to get resources, and we don't have the funding to take care of all this on our own. It's not going to happen, you know? So my question is, what is our plan? We're going to be about two years behind, my understanding is, on addressing some of these things because we lost that great money. So if we don't have that money and we fall two years behind, they're looking at sea level rise by 2030. We're almost in 2026. You're literally talking about four years away. And what are we going to do? Because I'm in a position now where, do I stay, do I go? If I stay another four years and I'm in a riskier position than I am now, was I a fool to stay, or should I have gone? So I think we need to take this really seriously, which, to me, addressing Morton and Banks and Pico and those areas are a priority, I get it, but we have to look at the bigger picture.
Okay.
Erin Burcellis, precinct five. I went to the Climate Committee meeting last week as well, and I don't live in a flood zone, right? I live at the very corner of one. And I did not realize how drastic it is on an everyday basis for people that live in those residents, right? Last town council meeting, we had some really amazing people sharing their emotional experience with that, right? So I was ignorant to that. And I think, and I think that if we are supposed to be one town that cares about each other, we shouldn't be ignorant. I'm not calling anybody else ignorant, I'm calling myself ignorant, to make sure that's understood. But how are we helping? I hear, oh, this flood zone, I guess, what are we doing as a town together to help make sure that those areas are being taken care of? sure that those areas are being taken care of? What are the plans? Not about 3A, not, nowhere near that, outside of all of that stuff. What have the plans been to create the infrastructure to help support that? I don't know. I'm asking generally, I know you can't answer. What is the plan moving forward? How much is it going to cost? Again, not talking about 3A stuff, right? What is the plan, and where is that money coming from? How are we going to help these people that are in this, those areas, that are our community, our neighbors? Or are we just going to let them deal with it, and let their insurance go up, and they'll have to move or they'll have to save? I don't know what the plan is, but we need to band together, actually work together. And also, so much, sorry. Arena, who was sitting next to me, I hope you guys heard and felt that, when we're talking about, we need to stand up and make sure people's rights, there's due process, people aren't being stopped randomly. Looking around this room, I don't think anybody would be stopped randomly, right? But there are people in our community that run that risk. Do you know how scary that is? I just want to leave you guys with a question. What does an undocumented person look like? Thank you.
Mr. Data.
Thank you. Jack, Precinct One. The bus routes and the bus stops reminded me that we've asked the state to build bus stop shelters. It's been going back and forth for a couple of years now. I have pictures, which I won't share, of older people leaning against a tree on Walden Street to shed. I have another picture of a woman in a wheelchair in the rain, waiting for the bus. It's been talked about to get funding, you know, with our hands out again, give me some money from the state of the federal government. They're not going to contribute to our town, they don't like us, the rest of the state doesn't like us. We've got enough mitigation money, mass water resource money, mass water money. No one's ever going to vote in this state to give winter payment money. So, I know that, I talk to people that live in different towns and cities, relatives. So as far as these bus stop shelters are concerned, you can buy kits for bus stop shelters. There's three components, you need a pad of concrete, you need aluminum rail, and you need glass. It's a very simple process. You can buy all the material yourself and build the bus stop shelters to conform to areas of the town that really need them, whether it's a setback, you know, the fence, you know, on the sidewalk someplace. And so you don't have to worry about the state coming in and determining where they're going to put the bus stops. The town of Winter, you guys should determine, with Mr. Cal, where the best places are for bus stop shelters. I did fret out, you know, bus stop shelters, you can buy them, but you can make them, it's a very simple process. So I hope you take that into consideration and help the people that are waiting for the bus, because everybody wants people using the bus for transportation. My dad never had a car, he used the bus for 40 years. My uncle lived next door to me, worked for the MBTA, he never owned a car, he took the bus. I'm very familiar with buses and the good that they can do for traffic congestion and otherwise, transportation, cheap transportation. So let's appease the people in the town that are waiting for the buses to work properly. You know, when the buses went up to Bedcar Square, you could stand in the store or the police station and kind of like wait that way. But there are many places where there's not, there's no place to hide, let's put it that way. So let's get somebody on a committee to build these, these bus stations, not to wait for the state, let's do it ourselves and help the people that want to take public transportation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kathleen, can you hear me?
Hi, can you say your name, your name, please?
Yep.
Hi, Kathleen Caputio, 49 Waldemar Avenue. So earlier in the meeting, Councilor Aiello asked that certain correspondence between our town officials, our Board of Registra's, and the state regarding the recall initiative of Councilor Tassaneri be posted on the town website. I don't have his word verbatim, but I believe it was, you know, in the interest of transparency, public information, it would potentially slow down, if you will, that law, so for the requests. I think this is a potentially dangerous path to be cherry picking, however. What correspondence we will be posting on our town website, if, again, whether it's Tony's decision or the council's decision, I think we need to be very careful about that. You know, again, and I was, just to be quite out there, I was not on the petition to recall for me, so I'm coming at this from just the perspective of, you know, a public, or a public person, sorry, a citizen. And but then, you know, in the light of what Councilor Aiello stated, that, you know, this is important, if the town manager again, or town council decides to go down this road, I'm hereby making a request that Councilor Aiello's email to Senator Lydia Edwards on April 8, 2024, agreeing to hijack the town of Winter, the meeting with the EOHLC, also be posted on the MBTA 3A section of the town website. Again, as you know, Councilor Aiello really feels transparency is important regarding elected officials and state officials' correspondence on important matters. I certainly think he would agree that he, as an elected official, his email to Senator Lydia Edwards again on April 8, 2024, agreeing to hijack the town of Winter, the meeting with the EOHLC, absolutely rises to the level of transparency, and he would certainly, I'm sure, would suggest that that be posted as well. So let's be careful about cherry picking correspondence for personal candidates. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other one?
Basili, can you hear me?
Thanks, Basili Malio, Precinct One. I just have two points to make. So I believe when the council, in, earlier in the meeting, have mentioned $2 million or $1 million earmarked for the demolition of the middle school site. I believe last year, the town manager actually confirmed that those funds would have to be used for, to have it demolished, but it, you had to do something with housing. And I'm not quite 100% sure on that, but I pretty much recall the town manager mentioning that that has to do with housing. And then second thing is, if we have the middle school site being demolished very soon, are there any supplies in their desk cabinets, file cabinets, that we could sell off or see if our other schools are in need? I wouldn't want to see those things go in as trash, and we should be reusing that, especially if we may be seeing a potential increasing, increases in class sizes. I believe last year, there were classrooms that didn't have enough chairs and desks, and that the school, the school ended up getting them, but if we have them there, let's make sure that we're using them or selling them off so that we do get the funds needed for them. Thank you.
Council President, that's a great idea, I know this stuff. We've already... Good night, very quick. Mike, anybody else, I'm sorry, Mike, anybody else that hasn't been heard in the second round? Cabinet, yes?
Karen Chavez, just a couple of things. As far as athletics on November 4th, we know there won't be a football game, this is Tuesday, and if anything is anywhere congested, then the middle school gymnasium with hockey, they pragmatize each other down there. So I don't really believe that that's going to be a major issue. Also, as far as the two ORC recommendations that are still before you, one of them, thank God, you finally voted on the abandonment, I mean, we worked very, very hard on that, and Attorney Sipuleta helped us immensely to get through that. I don't know what other two things that Councilor Aiello was trying to, what he wants to add or put in another spot, it'll be interesting to see. And the other issue, as far as the makeup of the council is concerned, I'm sorry that it's still lingering. We worked hard, we started April 2nd, and we worked every single week until June 24th. We got everything, I believe, on time to the council and to our town council for all his recommendations, and it still lingers. We're going to start doing ordinances on October 1st. Our meetings are all public, they're all posted. As a matter of fact, they're all posted right now through January 7th, so if anybody's interested, nobody seemed to be interested in coming to any charter meetings, that's for sure, but if anybody's interested, the ordinances are starting October 1st.
Thank you. Anybody else that hasn't been heard in the second round?
Mike, Mike Kimlin, Precinct Two. Very quick point of clarification, what I heard Councilor Tassaneri and Councilor Aiello were saying, and I'm not putting words, but what I heard, I was listening, was they were requesting that anything that was foiaed by an individual would then be made public on the website to all the public. So if I foiaed some emails or documents or whatnot, once that request was made and that material was released to me, that material would then be released to the entire public. So I don't believe that was any sort of cherry picket, I think it was just, then that is a publicly available document, and I would, I would agree with that. I think that's, that's actually a good idea. That's all, thanks.
Great. All right, Public Relations, we have three. Winter Biode Association is conducting a community gathering Sundays, September 28th, 2:00 to 4:00, at the EB Newton Cultural Center, 45 Palladium Street. RSVP to Don Mahoney, President of the Winter Biode Association, and Friends of the Council of Aging hosting a fundraiser at La Siesta on, I think it's tomorrow night. It's Wednesday, the 17th, which is tomorrow night, it's 4:30 to 8:00. They will be having some 50/50 raffles, trying to raise some money, and also 10% of the proceeds spent at La Siesta, either through takeout or in-house, will be donated to the Friends of the Council on Aging. And most exciting right now, we have movie night at Ingleside Park. So this is this coming Friday, September 19th, 6 to 9, the 50th anniversary of Jaws. Sponsored by the Friends of Winter Beach, National Grid, the Winter Public Library, Winter Parks and Rec, and many local businesses and individuals. This will be a great night, it's amazing, it's 50 years already, but that will be a lot of fun. So that's this Friday night, 6 to 9 p.m. at Ingleside Park.
There's a PTO fundraiser at 90 Degrees tomorrow, was that mentioned?
Nope.
PTO fundraiser tomorrow, I believe it's 4 p.m. at 90 Degrees, there'll be a 50/50 raffle, Sam Gil, it sounds like is the other one, but...
Encourage people to attend. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Is there a motion? Judged by Councilor Swob, second by Councilor Tassaneri. Any further discussion? We'll have a roll call to...
Councilor Aiello.
Yes.
Councilor DiMarco.
Ah, yeah.
Councilor Costigan.
No.
Councilor Tassaneri.
Yes.
Councilor Swob. Councilor DeRoz. Vice President Voucher.
Yes.
President Lucchieri.
Yes.